I'd like to welcome everyone to the Common Council City of Conner'sville August 17th, 2020 meeting. We'll stand and we pledge allegiance by my first one, Diana Phillips.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going officer.
Good Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be here. To each of you council members, I want to say on behalf of my family and our community, thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your concern and thank you for your time that you dedicate day in and day out for our community. Regardless of your religious affiliation or if you have none, I want you to know that we not only pray for you today, but we pray for you every day. And so we're grateful for that. So if you will, allow me to pray for you in this moment, if I could please. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity we have to live in this community and to be a part of each other's lives. And God, I pray for our mayor and our leaders in this room tonight. God, that you will encourage them, that you will strengthen them, that you will give them the wisdom that they need to make the decisions that are proper for our community and for the betterment of our lives here in this great place that we get to call home called Connersville. We love you and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless each of you. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everyone again, if you would. Please turn the rangers off on your cell phones and we'll begin with real call.
Councilman Norman. Councilman Barrett.
Present.
Councilman Williams Jr.
Here.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Councilman Rob.
Here.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilman Nettie.
Present.
Okay, everyone has the minutes from the August 3rd, 2020 meeting. Any additions or corrections? If not, I'll maintain a motion to approve.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Okay, pretty business. Approval of resolution 2020-56, the many infectious disease policy. The only part that was changed on us from the last time was the city of Conner'sville departments or buildings. Again, this is just a guideline. Things are going to change constantly, but this is just a good guideline. So we have a policy in place and things are changing constantly, so.
And if you notice, it says CDC guidelines. So that is what's changing and that's why we're referencing that. So today it might say one thing, tomorrow it will say another.
So it's tough to stay up on. This is the only change we've made. So any questions on that? Don't I'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion secured. Thank you. Okay, approval of pending ordinance 3586 to amend the traffic code. In Miami, questions on this, Horace? Clarence, if you had a chance to review all that, make sure it's right this time. Would you be alley?
Yeah, we're all right. We're in the right alley this time.
Alley's kill you, man. Alley's are hard, especially when you can't see them. Any other questions on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to be approved pending orders 3586.
Motion.
On first reading.
On first reading. We have a motion and I hear second.
Second.
On favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion secured. Thank you. Okay, approval of pending ordinance 3587, deletion of handicap parking space. Chiefs out there. No, chiefs out here. This is a handicap parking space that is no longer needed. The family turned it in. So if there's any questions on that. I should wait. Bill, Dave had to step out for a few seconds, so we'll wait for a few more minutes.
Okay.
Didn't want to do anything without you.
I'm sorry?
I didn't want to move on without you.
Thank you.
You able to continue or do you need to leave?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
Just checking. Okay, we have pending orders 3587, deletion of the handicap parking in front of 1610 Vermont. Is there any questions on that? If not, take a motion to approve the first read.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay. You will take the next two together. They're both reimbursements. We have approval of resolution 2057, reimbursement police to telephone, and approval of resolution 2058, reimbursement DOT 224 garage and motor supplies. Any questions on those?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve both resolutions 57 and 58.
Second.
I have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. And approving, ah, I gotta get my tongue twister here. Approval of pending ordinance 3588, the repeal of ordinance 6474. Does one of you want to speak to that?
Brad. This is the ordinance that we talked about at the last meeting. I think we needed to shut our eyes and cross our Ts a little bit. And this is, this repeal just gets us in line with changes in the law that no longer allows us to hold landlords responsible for their tenants. By the simplest way to say it.
The state legislators.
Yep.
Made that happen, right?
Yep. And it was passed and it became law, basically.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it took effect as an emergency measure somehow. So it's been in effect since March and we were practicing under the new law change, but we had to get our language fixed.
Question?
Yep.
Is there any way that the homeowners can impose a two-month deposit?
I would guess that would be between the tenant and homeowner.
Yeah, I mean, are you talking about for in regards to water?
Yes.
They can do whatever they want individually, but that we, we cannot. Or I mean, we have our deposit fees, that's it. I mean, are you asking for us to, I guess essentially increase our deposit fees?
Could be, because eventually we're going to take a loss. So we got to think ahead because we're the ones going to go in the red.
Yes, you're correct. But what the legislators did was change the onus that we will be on the loss rather than the landlord owner.
Right.
Yes, you're correct. And that would be one, one way to, that would be one way, I guess, that.
Keep in mind, this is on water. We can still sewer land on the sewer side, but it's still lawful.
And Tommy, Brad might be able to tell you about agreements that they're working on with customers for the next, for the coming months, which might help the utilities recuperate some of their money.
Okay.
Well, that's due to COVID. This is completely different.
Is that what you're talking about? Oh, yes, it is. You're right. I'm sorry.
I'll mention that when I, you know, let's, two separate things.
It is two separate things. No, we can't, I'm being asked, I'm sorry, I know it's, we're being asked by Clarence, if there's anything we can do within ordinance. No, I mean, the state essentially said that you can no longer hold homeowners responsible for a tenant, then it's water bills.
What I'm referring to is that, like Tommy says, the deposit.
You can, you can always look into increasing deposits, but then you, you know, start, there's a balance there. But yeah, I mean, you can, you can always look into what, what the, what you would like to see the deposit be.
We've been looking at a lot of different things. We may have come forward with something.
There's also a very good chance next year, this law kind of reverses itself. I think there's been some, some pushback on this one that they traditionally don't get. So there's, I'd say a better than 50% shot by this time next year, it's, it's back to the way it was.
I would then take a motion to repeal ordinance 3588.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, on first reading, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Quiet, you have a question, sir?
Evening.
Evening.
I have in front of you my report for July. Just kind of hit the numbers I usually don't go over, but the summary. We did, again, have a president at the fair, covered eight-track events, as well as staffing a tent, weather permitting. There was a couple of nights that there was monsoons and storms and so forth and so on. We did not, of course, I'm still a little gun shy after the storm back in, what was it, July? So as soon as it started lightning and blowing, I was out of there. So we used duty crews. We had a few people that said, hey, I want to cover XYZ event. And as they volunteered to cover with, with the unit. So we had approximately 215 hours, man-hours covering the fair. And we had zero overtime incurred to cover the fairs and events. So I was, I was pretty happy with that.
Thank you for that. And thank you, thank them for that. Yes, thank them for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
We did complete, in July, it's kind of hard to do a lot of stuff. Everybody's on vacation, nice weather, so forth and so on. But we did manage to complete an in-house pediatric advanced life support course. We certified 15 out of our 20 full-time staff. Certification is good for two years. And this is basically all about kids. It's, it's how to assess kids, the illnesses you'll see with kids that you don't see with adults, the medications used for kids that you don't with adults, and the changes, you know, it may be the same medicine, but obviously it's a different dose. So we, we did manage to complete that in July. And that was in-house. We have our, we have two pals instructors, actually, that we were able to utilize to, to complete the course. So I was pretty proud of that as well, especially in the middle of vacation season. So see if I have any questions.
I have one. Maybe two.
Maybe two, okay.
Well, it's, it's in reference to, I believe it's the same thing. It's the, the uniform and the clothing allowance. What's the difference with those two?
On the line items?
Yes.
So the clothing allowance is something that is paid to the full-time people twice a year to buy uniforms, basically. The uniform line, correct me if I, if I say something wrong here, when someone is hired on a part-time basis, they're provided one set of uniforms. They do not get a clothing allowance like the full-time people do.
Okay.
So they're, they're provided basically two shirts, a summer shirt and a winter shirt. And then accessories that go along with that. You know, we have to buy a badge or safety reflective vests, things like that goes into the, to the uniform line.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Attorney Chief Jones is not here tonight. Barry Polk, he didn't finish one.
Half and half.
All right, you should have received our July monthly report. On the report, I'd like to talk a little bit about the overtime. I added another sheet to our overtime on the report. This sheet gives a more detail of where the overtime is coming from. They normally just give a total of each department. There was requests at Board of Works last month, so I put a detailed list of where the overtime's coming from. We talked a little bit about meters. We are establishing meter replacement program. Our LP meters isn't just a model number. This is what we use now on most of the residential's in Connersville, over 6,000 accounts. They are starting to run out of warranty. They have a 10-year warranty. So we need to start thinking about this now instead of waiting till they all come out of warranty, all 6,000 at the same time. Well, they will warranty out a little bit out of time. So we have decided to replace them with a, a new meter. It's called a 20, Model 25. We're going to replace the, 500 of these this year. They're $114,000 for 500, which is about $220 a piece. So like I said, we can't wait till, we can't buy 6,000 at the same time. So we're going to see how it goes this year. They will be delivered in September and we'll see how quick we get 500 in this year. And each year we'll, we'll replace the meters. Because every year, a few hundred of these go out of warranty. I brought them to take a look at them this year. These are a lot more robust. They have a good testing passed. These are really good meters that we got from Badger. What's also included is the transmitter that goes into the meter lid. And this is the clock that actually sits on top of the meter in the pit. So we'll see how that.
Do they have the same warranty?
Yes, this also has a 10-year warranty. I'm going to pass them around. See the difference in two.
So question?
Yes.
If we bought that, if we got the same, that, so this is obsolete? That this, the old one?
They still sell them. They're just a little cheaper type of meter, kind of like the.
And it's still going to be a 10-year warranty on it?
Yeah. The, it would cost a little more, but they're supposed to be able to register low flow, those type of things a little better.
All right.
So the old ones, are they repairable?
No.
Not cost effective?
Not cost effective meters.
So what will be done with, with the old ones? Will you just scrap them?
We scrap them.
No, nothing else you can do with them?
If they're past their warranty, sometimes we consider that if they don't test correctly and they're not, and it's in warranty, we send them back to get its new one.
So you send the old ones back?
Yeah, if they're in warranty.
Okay.
If they're out of warranty, we scrap them.
So we can scrap them for metal for?
Yes.
Yes.
They're hardly worth anything.
Really? But a lot of them.
Yeah, a lot of them last more than 10 years. So you hang on to some of them for replacement?
Yeah, we test, we've been testing meters, rolling since I, I've been here, but we've been really testing these LPs for the last six months. And been finding a lot of problems with the low flow. And if they're out of, if they're out of warranty and they don't test, we get rid of them. They test good, we keep them.
That's right.
Yeah.
So you could replace if you had to?
Right.
If I remember all right, Mike, the industry standard is every 10 years you change out on meters anyway, because as they get older, no meter measures correctly after about 10 years.
It's our most important asset.
Yeah.
And that's how we generate our revenue, so.
Right.
And it, and year over year, it slows down. And so that's like not charging them much at a cash register every time somebody comes up with a paper or something.
So they pay for themselves?
They do pay for themselves.
Okay. Any other questions over meters? The only other item I have, we are starting our hybrid flushing program. We started last night. And he'll be doing it at night, I think tonight is, he's at East Fifth Street. Shouldn't see any disruption in their service, but I think on Facebook, we'll, we'll let the people know kind of what area they're in each night. But tonight, he's on East Fifth Street and pretty much what he does, he flushes three to five minutes, pretty much good test of fire flow pressure of the hydrant. It also removes any sediment rust that's accumulated in the pipes. And it gives him time to at least inspect the condition of the hydrants at the time. So do this once a year. And that's what we're doing here. It'll probably take two, three weeks to flush all the hydrants in town. Any questions?
Are you going to have the schedule on Facebook also?
Yeah, we'll try to put some each night where he's at.
Well, why not put the schedule on when there'll be rare wind?
Because I'm not for sure how many he'll get done in a night. So he'll let us know what he gets done and if he has any problems.
Weather retention.
Yeah. So it's hard to really, too much of a future schedule on Facebook. The people probably won't be sure of the difference, so.
Those people are sleeping when they're done.
They'll be sleeping.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey Brad, before we get started, I about whipped a cat out of the bag last meeting, unintentionally, which I guess it didn't matter, but I thought I got in trouble. And I didn't, thank goodness. I'd like to congratulate Brad on his new board appointee to the water lines. Board member to that now, and I love us, we're like, okay, but that's a pretty big deal.
Yes.
And Dave, you understand it all too well. So I'd like to congratulate Brad on his achievement. And it's a, it's a big win for Connersville and it's a big deal for Brad. So good job, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Congratulations.
Just to wrap up what he was telling me about the meters, just so you understand, sometimes if you buy a really good meter, I hope to think that this meter we're buying will last 15 or 20 years. But the meters that we bought were a, I kind of told the story at the Board of Works last time and I won't go through the whole thing again, but that meter was kind of junky when we bought it. But it was, we had a certain amount budgeted for, to buy, to replace the whole system. So that was only a piece of junk that we could afford. So it wasn't very good when we got it and they've slowed, only slowed it down. So we've been kind of looking forward to getting to a place where we could go ahead and start upgrading. And this meter that we're going to now is much more high-quality. Hopefully, we get 15 or 20 years out of those. When we first started changing out meters 15 years ago, we were changing meters that were 40 years old. But they were expensive meters and they don't last. Okay, quickly, I wanted to let you know, we got our, we got an OCR grant for $700,000. Most of you probably heard that, to do some water line replacement. So that's a project we're getting ready to jump into. I found out today that we're, we don't have to choose a engineer by scoring to finish out the engineering to get into this project. We're going to go ahead and stick with Strand. We've worked with them on two other OCR projects. Mike Klein, Peter works very well with them. And I just don't want to, on this, this will be our last OCR grant for three or four years that we can apply for, because they've already gave it, given us so much money. So I'd just rather stick with what's been working and finish this out with Strand. So I'll be bringing a contract to you after getting on negotiating with them a little bit. I gave you a copy of my ADA report. It's pretty self-explanatory, but a couple of the highlights, we were able to replace 168 new ADA ramps. That's one of the things that we do each year that really helps. I think this year we're doing about 80 or 90 in the paving. We've been working the last few weeks to get those designed. Also, we offered training to department heads and we, in the next year or so, we want to try to do a little bit better job of reaching out to the community and maybe set up a little committee where we can meet with some people with disabilities to have them help point out some things to us. So that is that. The last thing I wanted to tell you is that beginning next week, starting last Friday, I think we were allowed to start shutting people's water off for non-payment. And we've been getting the word out to everybody. We're kind of, we got a new payment, repayment contract through the Board of Works today that will allow a six-month repayment plan. So if anybody's got behind on their bill, get with us before next week when we're going to shut your water off and make some payment arrangements. We'll work with you. We'll get on that. Any questions about anything? Oh, I want to tell you about the street department report. We, most of that stuff's pretty boring, but they've been working extra hard to mow in the cemetery and get it all cleaned up nice as the years went on. And I went up there today, it looks real good.
Yep.
We have been out sweeping sidewalk, continuing in different areas. And as the mowing starts to wind down, well, we still have more weather and we'll get on a lot more sidewalk sweeping projects.
Flower boxes across the street, we found that's all ours.
Yeah, we just found out we're supposed to take care of those flower islands over in the city parking lot that we didn't think were hers. And we're hoping to get with the, possibly get with the garden club and see if they'll maybe plant us some good perennials over there and then we'll take care of the weeding and everything.
They'll do that.
Do you know anybody in the garden club you might be able to talk to?
Fortunately.
I'm Brad. Something mighty related, ADA. Over in front of Fire Station Four, where they had replaced ADA wall there at the corner. There's a cone sitting right there on that ADA ramp. And it's been there for, I don't know how long. So I asked the firemen, they said it's been there a long time. So I don't know if it's something that someone has put there, thinking of coming back to work on it or something, or what?
Some guys did some work putting in an electric line and they were boring and stuff up there on the, sort of between the fire station and the nursing home. And I think it was a remnant of that.
Oh, okay.
But I'll stop and look at it. I drive by it pretty often. I didn't know anyone was there.
Nothing else? You got a free cone. It's been sitting there for a long time.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Kathleen?
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I have my monthly report in front of you. Just highlights from the park. We've been working up on the trail at Smalley's and Second Street mostly. We're getting ready to turn our attention to the barns, taking down barns three and four. And then sports-wise, machine pitch started yesterday. We have 50 girls signed up. Soccer deadline is Wednesday and girls' basketball is due September 25th. So unless you guys have questions.
Pretty cool. You're popular, isn't it?
I've been playing. I played three times last.
This last time, there was at least four courts full.
Oh, it's always packed. Yeah. We have a morning group and an evening group. And Rosemary knows a couple of them.
Just a couple.
Nothing.
I know it's down at the boat ramp, trail there, there's a tree that had fallen. Has anybody removed it?
You mean in the river?
No, it's, it's across the, out of the trail.
No, I had not noticed that.
It's more or less.
That's really not open yet to the public, but yeah, we can go check that out.
It's more or less behind the solar panels. They're on that gravel trail and goes down over there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we can look at that.
It's quite large.
It's an obstacle?
It's an obstacle trail. There you go.
It was when I went down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Bolos is on her night either. Mr. Pauley? Mr. Pauley?
I'm gonna leave that on white chat because I can't set the camera after I had it set.
Are you calling me short, John?
Uh, for the month of July, we had, uh, ten hours twenty-eight minutes of meeting production, fifteen hours load minutes of original production. We finished up the last, uh, episode of Black Man's Small Town Live, and that was a very successful series. Emma may get back with us again, we may be doing one of those in the future. Uh, she's, uh, looking to see if there's more interest. I think everybody really enjoyed those. Uh, we are gearing up for football season. Uh, the first game will be Saturday at one PM, which is very strange, but they've kind of rearranged due to some other circumstances.
Light felt.
That storm that we had come through messed up the lights pretty bad, I guess, at the football field, and they're still repairing those. So, uh, our intention is to broadcast the stream live on our Facebook page, so be watching for that. And I'll be talking to the athletic director tomorrow about that. So we'll create an event, uh, if that's the case, you'll be able to tell all of the bands.
Friday night light to Saturday afternoon heat.
Yes, yeah, I understand, it's gonna be quite warm, so that'll be fun. Any questions?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Hey, is there any old business? Any new business? I'm sorry, Miss Lane's business, sorry.
Uh, I'd like to call me, I was at, um, Danville, Illinois, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And I took a walk with a friend, about a two-and-a-half mile round trip, and it was on one of the main streets. Not on the main drag through Danville, but one of the main streets. And if you wanna see trash, and you wanna see what this city could look like if we didn't have the efforts that we do have, I mean, it was, it was horrible. I mean, trash everywhere, on the streets, uh, in, in the, I mean, in front of Walgreens and whatever, you know, the green spaces between the street and the, just Coke cups and trash, just not, it, I don't think it had been attended to. There were, uh, there was an abandoned house there that's been there, I've been going there ten years, and it's been there that long. And it's deteriorated to the point where, and a tree had fallen on one and was down in the sidewalk and was foliage. We are not alone in that battle, and we are far ahead of, of Danville. And Danville has a bigger, has a lot bigger city than Connersville. They have a bigger budget than we do, but it's sure not showing in their, in their pride in their city, I'll put it that way. We have a way to, we have a long way to go, but if you look outside, you know, we've made great strides in their appearance, I think, here, and I think we should just keep it up, it's noticeable.
Speaking of that, in case any of the council person has, uh, ordinance issues, ordinance officer is now in the cockpit room for right now, we moved him over here. I'm meeting with him every morning, so we can stay on top of ordinances. Again, he's still part-time, but we're still, we're trying to get a handle on the ordinance violations. So if you have a question or concern, you're, you can, everyone can get right to him now. Police are, police signs hard to access, you really can't get over there, but now everyone has good access to him. I mean, I've met with him, so... We've got a table there, you guys can sit down and discuss stuff, so that option's always available there, so. They'll probably move him again, depending on how everything works out, but for now, that's where he's gonna be working, so. That's lots of for all the council personnel as well.
It's much easier here.
Yes. Uh, any other, Miss Lane's business?
We still have two ordinance officers.
Uh, we have, well, we have Dennis, or Mr. Myers is part-time. Uh, we have another part-time, but I'm not sure how much he's kinda working right now. So we're, we're gonna work on a solution for that, but right now we just have the one part-time. We have two technically, but we have one part-time actively. The other one, I'm not, he's been having some other issues to work on. So... Okay, any other, Miss Lane's business? Anybody from the public have anything to say? You came all the way down here, you're not gonna talk for any?
Yep.
Ain't all dressed up for nothing, okay. If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And motion of second, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
If I am signed, have a wonderful evening.